Hey, thank you everyone for coming. I know we excuse the president for just a moment. He'll be coming a little late. Drop, he runs off to the airport. Uh, we're gonna start with the general consent agenda. And thank you trustees for reviewing the materials and these items in advance. And is there a motion on the general consent agenda?
So no.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion. We have a second on the, let's see, second? Second, great. We have a motion and a second to approve the items on the general consent agenda. Any debate or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Call in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to invite that motion to pass. I'd like to invite you some clear again. Danny, why don't we invite Danny to, uh, present and for 3.01 with some suitable real estate.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we've been working with the, uh, with the Doxy family. Who is a landowner out adjacent to our West Valley City Hospital site for many years. Uh, when we initially, uh, were working on this assemblage, this parcel was in play. They, they weren't ready to sell at the time. And, uh, but we kept in touch with them over the years and we have struck a deal. Uh, he'll, he'll recall this can't be executive committee a couple of months ago. Uh, and so we're here today for approval. Uh, the acquisition is about six and a half million or about twenty-five dollars a square foot. Uh, that brings our, our combined assemblage to about fifteen dollars a square foot total for the assemblage value. Uh, value at this point is around twenty dollars for about our first work with. So we're, uh, we feel pretty good about our assemblage value and, uh, there are, there are, uh, several uses we, and I should can speak to this. There are temporary clinics that we need to set up out there. We can set them up on this site without disrupting construction on the main hospital site. And then there are future uses as well, uh, that will benefit the, the year and the hospital out in West Valley City. As far as, uh, immunity outreach and, and other clinical uses go. Uh, so we, we do have a negotiated purchase and sale agreement with the seller. It's, uh, it's out for signature contingent upon how your approval did today.
We, we, we talked about this, haven't we? We, we, we're going back to these parcels and then there's still a few more that we would like to send up.
There, we're working on some parcels across the street. There is a parcel here and then Jim Russell is working with UDOT on some parcels right here. So we are still actively working on assembling right now.
And that side will give you some flexibility for access to the site.
That's right.
To understand the new access off the main roads, uh, with going through pavement airflow and.
There was a UDOT issue with distance from this intersection. Uh, we didn't want to hear this access here, the secondary access right. We can get it there. We're, we're, we're far enough away from that intersection. So we'll second.
And we're waiting for it to move.
Yeah, we're. Definitely. We have the, we have the patch, the hospital has the patch.
All right, um, is there a motion to approve the, uh, these real estate transaction?
So much.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Do you have a second? And a second? Uh, we have a motion, a second to approve item 3.01 on the agenda. Any debate or discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. Call in favor say aye. Any opposed? So Danny, that means that the, the contract, the council signature.
But there, excuse me, there are contingencies in the contract. For trustee approval and for. So, and based on our feelings out there, we don't expect much in the way of. You diligence talent. There is a, one of the existing homeowners is going to stay on site for about a year.
Uh, yeah.
They're gonna do this. Yeah. And that doesn't disrupt this.
What did you quote?
Uh, probably ninety to one hundred days from next week.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Thank you. Uh, let's invite. Yes, Jen, Jen Reed, our associate vice president to present item 3.02. Um, these are always the fun ones.
We love talking about parking as early as morning. Thanks for having me, Danny. Uh, wanna thank the trustees for a lot of conversation on these topics. Um, also particularly wanna thank those that participate outside of this group on C and B. You've spent a lot of time, uh, talking last couple of months since our meeting, just appreciate the time you've spent. The advice and expertise you granted to me and the rest of the team. Um, I'm here to address a motion that passed in the D O two thousand eight call. Um, uh, where you requested that we, uh, conduct a parking and transportation study. And then identify some locations to construct parking. And we appreciate that. We did have the opportunity to engage with Walker Consulting the last two months. Uh, it was a quick engagement, but very robust. We spent a lot of time with Walker, uh, to help us look at our parking strategy. Um, really compile all of the previous studies that we've done in this area, the recent studies, and then provide analysis on data out of our parking and transportation systems. We go to that side. So, uh, the, the Walker team helped us frame potential demand over the next ten years. Uh, we're looking at considerable growth as you all know. And if we say at the current rate of parking, uh, per individual, uh, we, it looks to be that we need about seventy-nine hundred, seventy-eight, seventy-nine hundred new stalls in the next ten years. Twenty-nine hundred of those would be replacement stalls because we're projecting some construction on surface lots over the next decade. Um, that, that keeps our level of pain of, uh, on peak periods about the same with, with parking. So they have also offered some just, some suggestions on transportation demand management strategies that we could implement that could potentially reduce the number of parking stalls that we need. And help with some of the traffic problems that our growth are contributing to. Right now, we see a level of service at some of our intersections. So it was thirty-four, thirty-five hours. Additional, uh, number of cars in twenty thirty-five, we see that level of service go down.
So, so Jen, that's right. Make sure I understand this. Seventy-eight hundred is the base case if we don't change anytime optimals.
Exactly. Stay at the same ratio of, of cars. So seventy-eight hundred and twenty-nine hundred of those seventy-eight hundred stalls would be replacement based on potential construction that we've looked at right now. Right? So there's some assumptions.
Seventy-eight hundred, then there's recommendations that we can do with these.
Exactly. And one of the reasons we want to reduce that number, besides traffic and parking pain in general, um, is that the bonding for seventy-eight hundred stalls is considerable. So we could see a surplus in commuter services where those funds don't support other initiatives on campus right now to a deficit in twenty thirty-five in commuter services because exactly we take that to its fault. So certainly looking at a financial aspect of that as well. Um, where, where's the good balance of construction and transportation strategies? If we go for nothing. Uh, that, however, what they did provide us was a robust tool that we can use now in planning. They said this is only a two-month engagement. So as Katie and I and Seaman talked, and Alex as well, this is a, this is an ongoing process, right? We're already talking about parking and transportation in most of our meetings for the next ten years. Um, but they provide us a robust tool as we're planning new projects. Uh, along with their muscles new, um, uh, uh, workflow for projects. We're gonna be talking about parking and transportation in a more strategic way with anything that we build. With any planning that we're doing in the future. And the tool that Walker has provided to help us show if we implement certain TDM strategies um, versus build parking, um, what might come out of that on our campus related to parking expertise. We're hoping that by implementing transportation strategies, we reduce that some. We go to the next one. Uh, the next thing I want to address with you that was in the motion in April is, is proposing some locations for potential parking garages. Um, and so our team, uh, Jim Russell's team, they was planning and I was already sort of taking a look at the College Town Magic District where there's gonna be considerable density over the next ten years and what we're seeing some of that, that peak parking demand. The challenges there. And I've identified two locations, one adjacent to South Campus Drive and west of the services buildings. Right now, where we're proposing that we build, uh, subgrade, uh, parking so that we can construct it so that we construct amenities and, and on top of that garage. And then we're also taking a look at block nine, which is east of the stadium right now, uh, adjacent to the water, taking on South Campus Drive. Our legislative approval that we received the bonding two years ago identifies South Campus Drive as a location for the first instructors. And this is also where we have some considerable demand. We're looking at those two, um, lots specifically. They displace, um, fewer stalls in some of the other locations. So while we're in construction, we're not causing as much pain as some of the other locations that, that, um, might be good sites as well, right? For, for, for future garages. Um, so we are requesting approval today before the programming on those two sites. If we come up with challenges on either of those, then we'll come back suggesting new site and, and continue on.
What do we believe the cost per stall will be? A number of stalls that would be special location?
So we have, we've estimated right now that it's, it's between, I believe, forty thousand and sixty-five thousand is that about right? About forty, about four, forty-eight thousand average. So depending on whether or not they're below ground and then obviously what we find underground as we do our program, these things.
And how many stalls will be floating?
We're looking to get about a thousand stalls out of the two. So displacing about three fifty. So I think that's a net six fifty. But that could change based on programming. If we can go say another level deeper, you know, if we find that, um, then we're gonna try to maximize the sites. Right?
That's interesting. Also, so so, but obviously. So what is the space and?
Not right now, not right now. I think we are very interested where we can do below ground parking. We, we want to, right? We wanna be able to build, but other wonderful things.
Those are even more.
But they're more expensive. Exactly. So, so, but I would say right now, so we know about these sites. It's not, it's not a limited factor. Um, but as we move forward with programming, since we may, may find that, that something is going to be that way then that either drives the cost up and potentially based on that, you know, we come back with a different site. If it, if it's too expensive, then we'll find something.
So you'll, so they're in the program. How many stalls? Costs, well, how many above ground?
How many above ground, below ground? Uh, yeah, deeper than a feasibility study. So, and, and potentially, uh, the bonding approval allowed for us to build some amenities associated with these parking garages as well. So we're gonna be testing out some of the amenities that could be combined with these projects. So we're, we're taking, if, we were thinking of student services and, um, amenities that may be related to College Town Magic, potentially dining, retail, uh, students spaces on ground level. Exactly. Or some institutions have done some nice wraps around the garage. There's a network link, exterior office type space and retail space. So I think we'll, we'll take a look at those options as well. Uh, parking is our focus for these projects. And we've heard that a lot is clear for you that that's what we need to be focused on. But because the bonding approval allows that, we're gonna take a look at it and then we'll come back to you with a recommended program on these sites and with both C and P first.
When, when do you think that you'll come out?
We're, ideally, we could have a shovel in the ground, uh, late this year. So we're gonna try to move quickly, but we also wanna do a break. So if it takes us a little longer, we'll, we'll be posted letting you know. Um, but we'd love to deliver stalls in for fall twenty twenty-seven if, uh, we did a design build project on these, on these locations.
So then you clearly will do this study. It'll then come back to C and P for review and then come back to trustees.
Yeah. So yeah, as I understand it, so they're going to go back and programming. So we're, we're not just taking this information and saying, go forward, start selling. We're saying these are possible locations. Let's get more information. Let's get the detail about what the children are around. What is, what, what we're able to do, what our options are. And so then the, that kind of best plan, they'll review it. We'll come back here with a much more robust plan. This is what we'd really like to build, which we haven't for this cost. And then this, this void will get to approve. And give the noise of the actions. So we have another chance to kind of continue to look at this. And we all realize this is prior to actually final plans. We have a framework for a plan for campus, for physical development. But not everything farms out to really be a master plan. But given the urgency of getting more stalls, we're trying to, we're trying to make sure we're in alignment with that physical demo plan that we've worked so much on the last year or two. But also starting before. So hopefully at the same time we're doing this, we're continuing to pour in the physical development. University, make sure they're in alignment. That's part of what their programming will do is you talk to athletics. This is my next to you athletics. Is there anything unique as you're defining your future? Um, you know, with the entrance into the, the fine arts and the business, I essentially get how was that, you know, that I can, that's the plan is already identified as kind of a place for a sense of entry. Um, it's a part of campus. So those things are all gonna be considered. I asked her and she, it's definitely gonna go back and talk to all of the stakeholders to make sure we're in alignment with the campus master plans they continue to develop. So hopefully by fall, we'll have more clarity on both of those. Um, that we able to come back. They know that these, these places, these locations are in alignment. What, what we're gonna do. Then again, what are you patient? What are you? They had other options, but because we weren't far enough along in the overall plan, we sold that. And in a way, it's good. Some of them would have been right here with College Town Magic. But we've come this far. So we wanna make sure we close all the loops and hopefully, and I think we're in it.
The, Jen Reed. I mean, this, since we destructively, it seems like we're paying her an honor. Go out of the, the level of today. Or asking, or pre. And then doing to the offer that they do be going to the level of the utility, which is that in fact, and then doing this again. What is that? So out of reach. It seems like the current level of this sort of art of very that's just happens to be helping people.
Right, right. I think we have to have a baseline with our Walker study. Um, I think all of us would, um, would wanna see less pain. Well, and I, but I think our, I think we're gonna see some behavior change. So as we have more residents, you know, more students living on campus, um, we're gonna see reductions to parts. We've seen that. So, so, and depending on what policies we have for those residents, which sometimes is if they can live with that stadium strategies. How we may reduce the pain with some of our growth, even though that does make sense. But the, the, I, I think, um, we're looking at the, we have to look at the system as well. We have to look at the practice in the city, what the city is doing with their roadways and, and how easy it is to get here. And, uh, I, I think we're gonna start to test to study stadium strategies. The great thing about policy and the end to really invest less than building a parking garage. And then you can pull back if you, if you didn't get it right. Like, you know, that policy didn't work. It cost more pain, not less, or it didn't reduce, or it was single occupancy vehicles. And so you can, you can revert without investing a lot of money. So I think our teams are excited to move forward with some of those strategies. Um, and not just related to student reset, that will be part of the contract for parking, um, and that's kinds of.
Yeah, that's a question. Um, so you're gonna answer it. And maybe I just don't know. I know it's so brutal calling locations, but do we know what size of laws, what permits, can you get law for these specific laws?
We don't right now. I think there are like two types, um, applying, you know, we part of TDM may be that we take a look at our permit strategy in general and, and change that. So I don't wanna commit today that it's gonna be a, you motorcycle like it is right now, because we may be changing our, our permit policy, uh, as we move forward. But I would, I would expect, uh, right now with our current models, pretty similar to probably the business that we provide where, where there's a, a student, um, garage, and then, and then uh, south.
So, um, to answer your question, um, it's always, it's not just student, but it's also back. And so we need to let it evolve. So when you come back, some of the transportation centers, you can back there so you can pay care anymore. Bike lanes involved. Some of those, um, amenities, so we can study those in a couple of ways.
Yeah, absolutely. We talked about some of the amenities that are required. We don't even know. Um, bike storage, absolutely. We, we can't build anything without it right now. So we wanna encourage that use. Um, that basically sounds like I don't think that you at least I don't think we're correct in that. I would hope that I will be less than that. But to Jen's point, we had to have kind of a baseline for, for the consultancy. I mean, they didn't really decide on locations or policy. What they did was come and say baseline, if you just say the way you are, you need this many more stalls. So there's no question in our mind that we need to build stalls. So that was what we needed to do. We need more. We all made the answer, but we've done a study for it now. And then two, they gave us a model where we can pull different levers and have, you know, if we decide to have different assumptions or goals, to have fewer single occupancy vehicles. What does that do? The, how many spaces we need? Or what, you know, people are getting their TDM. And so it's a wonderful, um, uh, mechanism for, for testing it out. It's a great program to do that. And then we can test that out and how much, how extensively is it? And where are the locations for, you know, lower than that thing? And have we accomplished it with policies? I think. So I don't think our goal is to stay the same. I think it was just a baseline here of this model. Then when we get to have this master plan, which will incorporate a comprehensive parking uh, system and structure, then we'll start going with our assumptions and our goals and initiatives. This was just to kind of figure out validate we need parking, we need at least the same stalls, even if we don't know where everything goes. So we can move forward at the same time we're working on the plan. So, yeah. Thanks, babe.
But I remember in twice incorrect, the, the, your floor level parking is ten thousand a spot. Above grade is twenty thousand, below ground is fifty thousand. But we're, I'm just trying, I mean, forty-eight million dollars for a thousand parking spots. Think off, let's see. Why don't we go above ground and, and those six floors? Like, I mean, let's be economical about this.
So what, what happened in your study?
I think we'll take a look at it. I mean, I think it's taken with the president, but I, I don't think of, uh, of above ground parking garage is what we want in this area. And we go higher here potentially or another location. So I, I think, I think this location we're, we're, we're focused on below ground. May, it may be with the slope that we can have. Uh, one above ground is what Jen and I talked about. Uh, but this, this district, we'd love to see, uh, we, we'd love to see the parking below ground and, and, and buildings and the magic above ground, right? The other locations, I think, and, and, and also just, yeah, these are, these are the first two structures. So we're not max, we're, we're not utilizing all of our, that capacity that we have the personal logistics that you have with these two projects. What we're trying to do is, is relieve some of the pain as we enter into a period of a lot of construction. Right? Have some, some new parking in an area that's very dense and be, become more dense with more housing. And we're gonna be coming back with additional parking lots and structures in the future. So this is the first. But I, I think we will take a look at above ground, below ground programming and, and come back with what we think is the best option financially and yeah, for future construction projects.
As Randy, I, you know, I, I would say, I think you're right. I mean, it is really expensive. And I think that's the purpose of the parking strategy is if we have to build seventy-five hundred. And how have we not?
Why don't you put a full housing on top of the doors? Why not, why don't you do a P three instruction and you basically do parking and then drop student housing above it?
I think what goes above it right now is T D. I mean, we're, we're, we're talking about that, right? Internally, um, certainly we, we expect that somebody is going on top of that. But you're, you're building that to be able to, absolutely, to put something on top of that. Yeah.
So if you're gonna do, you're gonna do retail, you're doing one level. That's the reality, right? Not many people wanna walk multiple levels. Retail unless you're not major retail area. So you ought to put, you're gonna go with the incremental cost gets a lot cheaper.
It could be retail and housing. Could be, yeah. I'm happy to be difficult of not having our campus master plan full advised, but hopefully we don't see much. We can do them in tandem. But not to worry. It will come back here for that review before we.
But we know we're gonna add housing no matter what. Based on the growth. So we ought to at least orchestrate an option in the plan, but housing on top of.
And it matters. The plan is to have like five thousand.
Right.
It's right matter.
So at least, which is about incremental steps.
Agreed. Definitely. I mean, amenities will be listening.
So Randy, you asked a question and, um, I think Christian and I being developers and friends, that's the developers who want us to, to cost the budget. And so what makes the industry, I need in my opinion, is that where the landlord will take, we're both in projects in the past, we've eliminated parking because of the cost. And we probably need to, once the pain factor, we probably need to invest in catch up for some of what we constructed at the sauce campus. And so to answer your questions, installs next door, but that was primarily excavation. Um, no groundwater, no blasting. It was about twenty thousand dollars first call to go one level underneath. I'm gonna be assigned someone to here. That was mainly next. Um, really good soils, we sport it. And so, um, we probably need to catch up with the rear, yes, these are scary numbers, or at least big number. Question is, happens to densifies. I, Jen, I need to spend a lot of time studying. And there were none of these probably are the two right locations. The question was, what and how many? Depending on how many stalls anyone, and so when we talk a little bit about this, it is more expensive to go underground than it must be. But if these are two of the people on the action, that we better make sure you get some balance. Better, you know, above that and under the.
The cost, oh, it's not, oh, it's. Better is valid.
Sorry, this is bringing closure. It sounds like discussion is about is the margins. At one point, there's a marginal cost uh, optimized that we're not giving down. We just have one floor, four, one floor. Uh, you know, we're giving up the space on, um, we seem to need some, all the advice, since it don't provide this. Yes, I think you're asking a question. I mean, they, we approved mold room, so three hundred and fifty seats. Us faculty, staff, performers, that, you know, for some of that part of the, where it is possible. And so also in the arch corridor, you know, some of the projects that are underway. Stadium, it, it's the right location. There's so many, and where's the best? And I think you're bothered by so. Yeah, a hundred and sixteen items.
Right. And you'll come back with the, what pro forma?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is, we're, we're.
Relatively fast and.
That's come back with, with cost and, um, the actual, yeah, feasibility.
It does cost that, you know, you found and hopefully with putting charge and stuff.
The system supports. Parking, the debt service. So no, no one garage is paying for itself on this campus, but then all the surface stalls and combined with the garage, the system supports that.
And then they face and we would look to see if he's on the ground. Had that become the land optimization strategy, the more expensive, go on the ground.
That'd be fire spaced.
So then you'll, you'll have to work it out. Wait up, and we'll come back. Okay, um, and thank you so much. You're welcome. I know this is a lot that they've done. And we really appreciate it. So is there a motion? And I'll, I'll get a little more, um, specific in this motion. Is there a motion to approve this 3.02, which is to move forward from just the program into the two proposed garage, parking garages and knowing that it's the programming results will come back to C and P for approval and then come back to the trustees for approval. So it's for parking. That's kind of a long one, the motion suggestion. Does anyone wanna? Recap that. Okay.
We'll, we'll make it sound amazing.
It don't sound amazing.
Even more amazing with the, when you presented.
Use some three syllable words or something. Okay, uh, we have a, a motion to approve 3.02, the programming with a note that'll go to C and P, then back to the trustees for approval. Do we have a second? Second, a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Any debate or discussion?
I don't like you, Christian. I don't like it. I, we, we, Steve, three years ago, uh, uh, got pretty frustrated when we approved the building that did, that took out the parking as a cost in order to have the building penciled. And, and he said, we're kicking the can down the road. And then a year ago, we had another and Katie said, kicking the can down the road. We're gonna go into closed session here in a moment. And every dollar matters. And we're talking about, you know, for the convenience of being underground, paying an extra twenty-eight million dollars. Um, and, and I've gotta tell Um and and I've got to tell you, in closed session, I'm gonna say that twenty eight million dollars could come in awfully handy, handy. Um I don't think it's the right trade off. I I don't like it. I I I.
Well, I, my understanding of the the way this is work, I hear you. Yeah, and I think, I think we all be, and Jen, that's part of the programming. We'll need the options to look at with the accompanying revenues to go along with it and and then what would be if you do go underground?
But history shows, Christian, that we're gonna get back. The final draft is not gonna look that different than the initial draft. And I'd rather our message be very clear from trustees that um we're not gonna spend forty eight million dollars for a thousand parking spots. And we're not gonna approve another building in the future that doesn't have in its model of the parking um that's associated with it in order to allow that building to pencil for approval. Because my my concern is that we're proving a discrete decision that if we put it in aggregate with all of the other decisions, we would actually come to a different conclusion. But pulling it aside in a discrete scenario, we're saying, oh, yeah. You're gonna tell me that me correlating this twenty eight extra million dollars for below ground, over above ground has nothing to do with the subsequent decision that we'll be discussing in an hour. But to me, they're they're highly, highly correlated. Um and 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 I would much rather be above ground than make a bad decision on the other, on the other item. And I'd much rather just put a stake in the ground right now, saying, we're not going to approve another building that doesn't have in its model the cost of parking in order to allow that building, building to pencil. So I I'd rather not decouple some of these decisions. I'd rather, um couple them.
Um I think part of that, too, is a change in how we manage parking. And I'm telling you a little how to turn it, uh, you know, we're traditionally, if you build a building and you had the parking under, it had a pencil for your project, your point, and it just separated from that. And I think we've had conversations that we should bring personally a system. You know, where where the system supports it, not just this single building, which is part of the solution. Just understand that separately. So we're gonna have to build some parking that has nothing to do with certain projects. And other projects are going to have to have parking, but it will be part of a system that the university will get at that point. It's, the system has a whole lot of demands on on those funds, and it'll have that.
And maybe we should, we we help faculty, staff, students, ourselves, everybody understand the true cost of parking. Because you might see tracks being used a little bit more and electric scooters and bikes and things like that. If we're totally reflecting the the real cost of parking in our, in our, in our, in our costs.
I think, Katie, your point, uh, that the, it's hard to put the parking cost on the building when the building doesn't get the revenue. The parking is a system that is supported by other uh other lots and things in a, in a group. So we need to think of it as a platform for these buildings. But I think, Randy, your indication is that if we look at it, I think that that's a prime piece of the estate and a very important corner that's an entrance to the campus. Putting in above ground parking garage probably wouldn't be the best look and feel for that spot, but it may be too expensive to put underground. I think that's what the study, the study is, but to put it, if we're a housing unit, there's your point. If you put that parking, uh, there would be some charge for parking for those or accommodation for students that were there that paid for parking, but that doesn't go to the cost of the building. So it's harder. That's why it's separated that way is that the revenue goes in a separate bucket. If you're a private developer, Steve, and you have a lot, you have that revenue as part of your building pro forma, you don't have that in this case. So if we put that into that, into that cost of those buildings and separate it from the rest of that, that might make sense, but you wouldn't build a thousand parking spaces or five hundred parking spaces in that underground for a resident hall there. Wouldn't, it would never pencil out. So I think that's what the first thing to come back and say. Look, if we build it underground and we're gonna put something on top of a housing project or detail or something else, then does that make sense? Did the building in above ground parking garage there? I don't think we want to. We would do that on that corner. It's just two important pieces of the state for the entrance to the campus that right across from the art museum. See, that would be a very, that would be a a a tragedy to put something like that across from that may interest the campus then. And it is, your idea, that this is part of a system that we need to look at. And then those buildings, if it's housing, you know, they take away the parking if you even have uh for a student housing, they'll take that away for a a game, right? They'll take, so students, it gives the game revenue, gets it, so it moves students out. So we use that parking as a, for other events and activities in a, in a tired system way. So that's how it's looking at is building that, building that system. But it may be too expensive on that corner to put that kind of parking structure in uh if we're planning on putting that in other parking and other places. So I think that's a valid point on that, but that's why we don't forget.
And my, my understanding on this motion is it's not that we're approving parking, you know, we're just, we're just approving, hey, tell us what our options are in there to help us make it better decision overall.
And Kurt, what I'm saying is that six years the initial draft and the final draft often are very, very similar. And so we have the opportunity to take a stance now that I think will influence the final drafts in important ways.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and granted, I'm new to all this. I understand we gotta, you know, we've got a campus planning, you know, committee that 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 reviews everything. It sounds like you do have some more checks and balances in place from previous, which again, is.
Yeah, and in parallel and coordination of this, there is a group we're gonna call, I'm kind of working over that, of that space and how that would work with it, Randy, so. It's, 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 parking is like, like you said, parking seems to be is a platform that the whole university runs on. But it's got to support the functions in that area too. So it's kind of a vertical and horizontal work of that, that specific structure of that location.
I mean, to your point, Randy, it's true. Sometimes we think we are proving just the first step, and then next thing we know it's out of the base. But we, I think Jim's putting, uh, maybe, you know, what do you think? It's um some new protocol internally, administratively, I've been working with the team to have more protocols as they direct themselves to this story so that we're more effective and that uh we have a better process for these coming to us. And that's why there's clarity here that this is to go forward, continue to move forward, gain more information, because none of us are comfortable proving this, this, what we have today. Go forward and get that information, pick the tires, see how it fits with campus master plan, show us how much the costs are, and then we can choose. We can say, well, we need the parking, but not that class, not that location, not underground, not above ground, so. I'm hoping, and I know that's different in that span, but I, that is the the plan, and it is gonna be different than.
Katie, I'm, I'm now paired in Katie Eccles for a moment.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, but, but, but I guess what I'm, the most important thing I'm trying to communicate now is we do, we do believe that we need a thousand parking spots. We don't believe that the cost that that we believe the cost is way too high. Um can we go back and find some more alternatives? And can we put a stake as trustees in the ground now? That when we are evaluating buildings in the future, let's take residential halls, because they can do immediately offhand, where they pulled out parking in order to make it pencil even though we knew we would have to build parking for those individuals based on, on those residential halls. And Katie, that when I'm paired in you, what happens is then we're brought a decision and we're told, we have to make this decision now, because we're out of time. And so I'd rather us have the debate now while we have time rather than making the, you know, than having it go back, they come back very similar to how it's been for then and now. And we'd be out of time and we, we say, we really don't have an option. The last two buildings where we made that argument, we were out of time. And so we said, okay, we're gonna kick the can because we're out of time. But I'm just trying to have the debate now while we still have time.
So, so, and that's where we're also trying to bring it here.
Yeah, yeah.
Before this, all this is big plan, we've got a contractor, we're.
But if the message goes back, like, yep, come back, give us some above ground options, find a few other locations. Above, below ground just appears to be off prohibitive.
So, so, so let me jump in. Jen, I, maybe you can weigh in on this.
Yeah.
But you can try. The way I've looked at the parking, so when we build a building, we, we have to build a parking and we get the revenues from the parking and the building. We kind of look at the whole, we see what the R O Y is. The way I understand you is working, if you have a separate parking revenue structure, so it's kind of a system-like, and and then you have your building and the revenues. And when we say we we've separated them to, because it's a big campus, but we've separated the revenues. So that the parking structure, I'm sorry, so the residential tower, we did put the parking, because the parking revenues when we sold the passes weren't necessarily going to the building pro forma.
So Christian, three years ago, Zoom call, Sorenson Gay Building.
Yeah.
Um Steve says, how many students are gonna live here? Let's call it five hundred. How many parking spots? Well, we'll need two hundred parking spots for those five hundred. Where's the two hundred parking spots and the cost of the building? Yeah, we took it out. Why'd you take it out? Because it wouldn't pencil otherwise. But we're still gonna have, and Steve made this argument, but we'll still have to have those two hundred parking spots. Yes. Then put it back in the model. If we put it back in the model, then building's dead, it won't pencil.
But, but that's my point. I don't know if the revenue.
The revenues were not.
The revenues weren't.
The cost of that. It was, but the revenues were not. That was one. It was separate. Now, LaSalle, when we did that, we actually paid for the parking lot, but we don't collect the revenue from that parking off that. It's.
That.
Then now the, the LaSalle building, the building doesn't get those, or the order doesn't score, it's on, it goes all into the parking.
So, so there, there's.
Yeah, yeah, but.
The, the revenues are, you're saying the revenues are decoupled, therefore you have to decouple the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The cost, the cost of construction should be borne by the people collecting.
So what, what happened is we should have said, okay, in parking step up, you're gonna build it and you're gonna get the revenues. And then, as I say, it doesn't pencil out. We say, as an institution, we are going to support this. And that's where we have.
That's, that's.
We need both those parties to come together and say, we'll pay for that part, but you, but you've got the location, so I'm putting it under you.
And and it's not just students, those parking lots are not just students, those are generally, you know, people can park in them with different permits on them. So they're still open to the entire system from, except those lots as well. So they're not just exclusively for the housing, so.
So the way I am understanding that this programs can come back to us, she's going to have a robust model, these two, you know, so we can say say it's a hundred, you know, I, you know, just we'll look for game, let's not. We're gonna go with lower numbers. If it's forty eight million, there's going to be revenues associated. And so that if the forty eight million and she has the bond and we have the bonding capacity to do it, we're gonna look at how much you sell the permits for.
Mm-hmm.
And does that revenue cover the debt service?
That building over thirty.
That's the system, right?
Over the debt.
It's a system, it just makes it, we're not paying for itself, that we don't.
Parking as a system
Yep.
to do that.
Yeah.
And so you have the cost and then you'll, you'll have the system. And you're gonna look at it, here's the cost, there's the revenues above ground, and here's the cost and the revenues which we did at below ground.
And what?
And does it pencil? And that's how I think
Yeah.
this is being looked at. The forty eight million, or say whatever the delta is between above ground and below ground, that's not coming out of provision, that's not coming out of any other buckets. It's just coming out of the revenues from the the park.
Right, man, I, I mean.
For forty eight million, you also charge two hundred and eighty seven dollars a month.
Yeah.
And.
To get your, yeah, no, that's, that's a real cross of parking, if you had to.
Yeah.
So there's one thing I would add, Randy. So I, I was thinking that, that's it. When we approve development, um spending more time here, so, but there's some other things I've seen across campus. So for example, we, we want, we need alumni house to be activated for non-university activities. In the M F A, Gretchen has a three hundred and fifty six feet seat after the, she can't use that all the time because she doesn't have enough parking. Next year, we have a four fifty, a, a two fifty, and a one fifty, hundred, um, um, nine hundred seats coming um for auditoriums. And Dean Lusner wants to activate the narrow space and events of research conference in two years. That means that two thirds of the narrow parking lot would be full at eight in the morning, just with one building. So it really is a complex situation. We need to think across campus, how do we activate the space that we have and space utilization? Keep it, it's not just students, you know, how do we interface? And so this is really a complex issue. So with Epico, it stands in that. Here it's how do we make sure we activate, activate the space that we're investing?
It feels like we have, you know, the two sides of the argument. Uh, one, this is just a side uh programing, it's uh, uh, we're, we're going to keep working on events, and I sort of plan to relieve the pain and so on, so this will come back. I think the other argument is, um let's please not come back with fifteen million dollars or a thousand stalls in a sense that we can depend on. There, there, there has to be some sense that where the money, we should justify the money is going to be optimized, the land optimized.
Yeah.
And whether that involves building something above it or so that I think, Randy, if I may speak, you are, you're just saying let's please not come back in three, four months with, with no consideration of that, because there will be resistance, there will be resistance on.
I think, I think that's fantastic. What we can do, I'll just say internally, internally, as, as administrators, you think that airspace in that area and that politics comment area is very valuable. And so thinking about below ground parking as, as, this, where we've been internally, even though it costs more um because of, of how valuable that airspace is in that district that we're hoping that in in life, right? Um, we, we will happily come back and program it above ground and below ground and take a look at cost. But that's something really, Jim, Steve, uh, it takes a little bit more effort, but it sounds like, you know, there's a concern there, you wanna, like, it's tires a little harder on, on that location and see.
Parking lot immediately to the south owned by a, 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 a faith-based organization. Can we do a hundred year lease with them and
We've been working.
And building above ground right there, yeah, that's, that's.
Yes. Um, just as a reminder, for these two locations, one of, one of the um things that we considered was the displacement of parking developed. So what we don't want to do is place a thousand stalls for the next five years without potential of having some new stalls for we're gonna have a real challenge with construction in this area, and we need some stalls that displaced the installed project you're talking about, the displaced, that if you burn extended, that's a much larger project. Um, so, so we're looking at other locations, um, but the, the displacement factor on these two was ideal. But I think we can come back and, and program above and below it with, without problem.
And hopefully in the fall, when they come back in a bit, Randy, to your point is here, what y'all are saying, which I'm also concerned about, which is why we're trying to do this, keep moving forward with the surveying seat for parking, but also knowing we need to develop campus master plan is for parking as a whole. You know, if we think this is too expensive in this space, but an above ground option is not good with our, our vision, what are some other options? And what, what's the timeframe for those in the lives of the, of those? Maybe we don't really need this, except for, as the sense is, the, the you know, we've got to have parking to set off the parking, actually, we actually build it, but there might be other options. So that might be helpful too, that, gosh, that trade off, I see why we really need that parking, but that trade off isn't good enough. But here's another option nearby that may come up, that's more cost effective, we put another layer on that. And we're in a better place. Um, so the word to your point, not just one off, because the whole point of this physical development plan that we still are pushing to get to get finished. And parking is a critical component of that. So hopefully that might be something we've been things to be closer to as well, is what is parking as a whole look like? Because then you can balance whether it's critical that we spend that much there or not.
And part of that, though, is the financial. Exactly. Same, yeah. Which is for system pro forma, and if there's subsidies for parking, what are those subsidies? Or do we cover the costs and the amortization through the parking pass records? That's what I want to see, and that's part of this.
Great, yeah.
Study.
Absolutely.
Both of it, both of it, graduate support football, stating, so they would be, their ideal position, or.
Yeah. Very, very interesting, supporting the, uh, uh, we have a balance plan.
Yeah.
All right.
So I, I would like to think this is not a pitch hand motion, it's to your voice.
It's the relevant factors for something less, so that's, I believe, the whole, or does?
Yeah.
The next chair invites her to make sure that. They're a lot.
I'm glad. No, but Randy, to your point, thank you, because I. No, but Randy, to your point, thank you for that. Because I think it's really important to establish some of those guidelines and help. Uh. Help to know with where where we have skepticism and concerns so that we can have a chance to address those. Did I mean a system wide, a system wide presentation next time on how we're going to pay for that? Because I don't think these will pay for themselves. But if it pans system wide with different type pricing and all of that.
Troy and I were just saying, three hundred dollars a month. Um, um, well.
Did that for lots behind LaSalle and the uh, the Eppa Center. They're three quarters full. The people won't pay that. And that's an open faculty and staff is they won't pay it. There's there only three quarters full. We're right behind the LaSalle right here, right in the center of campus. It's only three quarters full. They're the academic here because the prices that buy people are buying for those way and for Los Maning Block. So it's pretty, you would think, so probably it's it's, yeah, it's a pretty.
And what do they charge at LaSalle?
I I don't know if you see you, you know what that is? Yeah. The what the, you know, the LaSalle lot for this, it's a CU.
Ray, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I believe it's two eight, it's about three hundred a year.
Three hundred a year.
Three hundred a year. And yes, that won't pay. There there's the.
Yeah, there's a, there is a price.
There's the message.
Yeah, that's so. Yeah, I mean, that's a, so you've kind of, you, so that's you're right about what what people will pay to park calls you can do, right? So.
Yeah. Well, this falls from mountain study. Why don't we? I mean, we have a motion in a second. Should we? But I I'd like to call for a vote on it. And then we're going to have a lot.
We had the discussion we wanted. We had the discussion we didn't do that.
Is, uh, we have a vote. All in favor.
Well, and I would add to that, when we talk about programming, adding in these things that we talked about.
The financial.
Let's just add those to the motion so that we know. Imperately, we'll be the system pro forma, is that's how we have an option for.
And then these are. On their form, yeah.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Randy, thanks for that discussion.
It's interesting that LaSalle, if it's three hundred dollars a year, and people would rap, and it's only three quarters full. Um, it does give us the important market information about, you know, how how important parking is or is not. Clearly, parking more conveniently isn't worth another hundred dollars a year, would you?
Yeah.
If they have other options.
So how do you interpret that in terms of how our investment should be made? I'm just struggling with forty eight million dollars for third for a thousand parking spots. Can we be a little further away and be significantly less expensive? That was instead of going underground. We go a little further away so that we can charge a little rates. Uh, people walk a little cheap, a little further instead of building underground. Because if you amortize forty eight million over a thousand parking spots, that's three hundred dollars a month. For a parking spot. And if people, if LaSalle is only three quarters full. Because they're charging three hundred dollars a year. Then. Will 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 that solve our parking, um, complaints? Because that is what we manage to. What do you think, Alan?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say before, but like, I hear this approval of search for programming. And obviously, I like the best, like most cost effective solution, but you're asked any student on this campus, like, do they approve this? Like, every single person say yes. So I think. Sure, they more students want one part. Yeah, that's our number one.
Let me just clarify, sorry, the Q pass is three hundred, the the CU pass is a thousand. So apologize for that misinformation. But they're paying a thousand to park LaSalle. And also just say that the vacancies in LaSalle, um. Don't necessarily mean that people haven't bought those permits. So, um, just just want to clarify that as well.
And 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 I would say, even the parking revenue modeling. You have some new, you know, there's other. Revenue opportunities other than there's those passes like game base and other.
Revenue sources. So our parking is a considerable revenue source.
Parking tickets, parking tickets go in.
We try to keep that revenue neutral, actually.
What is that? How do you get revenues actually?
Okay, that that's that's, but the larger point is.
I may have been a personal complaint.
Let the minutes show. Thanks. Shall we go on to the uh, Sarah's report and.
It's twelve minutes. Steve, you're good. I'm giving the president.
May I have the the president?
Yeah, I just, uh, three things quickly highlight. First and foremost, uh, this uh, Friday, we have our groundbreaking of University of Utah Hospital and Health Campus in West Valley. Uh, it's going to be an incredible community event. Would love to see all of you there. Um. Uh, we will be coming off of a Southern Utah bus tour, which we're leaving on tomorrow morning. Uh, visiting a number of the community in Utah. You know, we do these uh. In park every year. Uh, so we've got a both a southern and northern Utah tour this year. And then the LS Gags Applied Science Building ribbon cutting on July sixteen. So. Um, a lot of new capacity starting and coming online this summer.
Thank you. Right, um. Shall we go to the Vice President's Report and we'll start with Dr. Monica Lee.
Thank you very much. Uh, there was a report, well, he had lots of details involving, obviously, two highlights. One is what's even important. To this volume, maybe three highlights. One is that you look into the chief behavioral health officer, which I know. As you shown, I will be thrilled about. So we're very excited about working to align all of our offerings to the. Pathways that the state has identified and there's opportunities to make more behavioral health for us. Uh, secondly, we have done a search of studying and worked with the Department of Economics and Division of Pharma. And CSBS and the business school and they're working on a search. For a chair that will serve both of the units. We developed a guideline for integrated school economics. That's process is underway this summer, I think, in the fall. And then lastly, the faculty voted, uh, the very strong majority to merge transform into the school. Social and cultural transformation of that contract into the community communities. And so there'll be more. Work to be there as those package, as those leaders develop their proposal, but they'll be submitted into shared governance process in the fall. So those are the speakers I want to share with you. And um, and also I wanted formally say thank you. To Kathy Gar, who attended the Utah Asian Campus Graduation thing, where we we both spoke and it was a wonderful event that always does. Uh, they have a record class material graduating one year to be seventy nine, representing students, representing twelve countries. It was a really wonderful event. We were really happy to have Kathy and we think of Randy, we join this. So that's all. All we can rest, we.
From Health Sciences, similarly, you have a written report with a lot of details. Want to echo President Hamels' comments about the West Valley opening. Uh, the Health Science community, I think, particularly excited about that. A big, great event. Want to point out a couple of important leadership changes for the record. Uh, with Dr. Sam Stanley's been stepping down and leading the beginning of the Spencer Fox Technical School of Medicine to the Assistant Chief Clinical Officer. Uh, Dr. Christina Collins Duffin will serve as the interim team. We will now launch a search for a permanent key to the Spencer Fox Technical School of Medicine this summer. Uh, which I think to the, uh, you have to think, but Dr. Collins Duffin is our character department, clinical health is highly qualified. When you do a great job. And Kenzie Graves is also going to be serving as our Chief Medical Poly Officer for the Health System. She has a long history of poly activities in the Health Sciences and can be great at that. And Dr. Alana Wong, who's now our new Chair of the Department of National Science, uh, to be for Brad's parents, who served for fourteen years in that role. Um, we had a nice recognition for the Health System, Dr. Self, where it's a top place to work. Uh, and also I'll just highlight these editor giving lectures as a member of the National Science. It's a relatively rare dysfunction, pretty hard thing to do. And so that destination is, I think, um, you really know. I'll leave the rest for everybody to read through, but thank you.
We'll go to the Academic Senate and invite a little bit surprise president. I'll come behalf.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, I'll just read my remarks from over here and um, there's not a lot to report on.
Actually, Richard, I think the the mics are here, so.
Uh, it's going to be in the camera. We we we, there are no these quads. I'll make it very brief because the Academic Senate has held no. Uh, full meetings since the last meeting of the Board of Trustees, uh, although we have had just yesterday a meeting of the Executive Committee of the Senate. We continue to meet, but we do this in summer. Uh, but the only official thing to report on is that. Um, as past President Conff reported, the last meeting with the Board of Trustees, at the last academic Senate meeting on uh, April twenty eighth. Um, Brent Brent Milne of the School of Dentistry was voted president-elect. Um, and at the first, the last Senate Social of the Year on May twelfth, uh, Dr. Hoff. Uh, asked the ceremony, got to me, I'm Richard Price, uh, I'm going to be. Uh, faculty at the Senate President for this coming year. And uh, we had a really good time. Uh, it's celebrating the part of work that the Senate have done over the past year. I look forward to the work of the year ahead. Over with a lot of of policy revisions we're going to undertake at the discussion of President's course. Um, and uh, just wanted to say thank you to all the trustees who were able to participate in graduation ceremonies in series. I know that there's some, you know, little ones who lost the student seeds. And um, I just want to say, that was a great discussion about the parking, I think you guys think. Speaking as a faculty member, I know that on the first day of class. Students are always late because they can't find a button. Uh, and it's the number one thing that we built just a moment ago. So, um, thanks for being over. Thank you.
Well, we want to invite Marie. Winters to come speak, but oh, no, we want you to stand because I understand this was your last. Meeting.
As president. Speaking as the president of SAP Council.
Well, thank you very much for all of your service and everything.
Yeah, I was just basically going to say thank you. Uh, and also I I. It's been an amazing experience. You'll still see my face as I support Brian Jordan, who's the new SAP Council President. Uh, and Ali Nensor, who will be the incoming SAP Council President. But I also wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to participate on various passports, passports, representing SAP. So thank you to President Randall for being part of the meeting point, uh, representation and expression task force. And thank you to Carlos Montoya for allowing me to be part of the wellbeing and wellness council. So it's been an honor and a pleasure. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That alles.
Yes. Yes. Um, yeah, really quick. I just want to point out one thing. Um, so this, we, hopefully you guys are able to view our. Uh, ACU budget and the consent, but one of the notable changes that we made that we felt was important to students was. We allocated uh, more funds to the RSOs, our recognized organizations, which are our clubs. Um, we increased by three percent, which with a one point eight million dollar budget, so it's a significant amount. So. Really excited to grant more funding for them because we saw a huge demand that ASU wasn't able to meet halfway through its school year last year. We really feel like our clubs are our main source of whole term loan commitment. So that's our biggest change that we're really excited to develop. That's my report.
Well, I will say at this point, um. That'll conclude the public portion of this meeting, including, and at this point, I would like to, we will be voting the votes of this meeting of state law. In order to discuss, uh, to have a strategy such as discuss the purchase of change. Or at least a real talk to the end and discuss the character of confidence or physical and mental health. Having anybody who already deals with, the post portion of the meeting will take place in this room. And all persons other than a valid will be excused. So. We need a motion to close. We'll have a motion to close the meeting and then. In that same motion to enter into the.
The move.
So moved in a second. Any debaters, discussion? All in favor to say aye. Any opposed?
I just heard earlier, so there will not be any other public, uh, part of the cap as itself. So just, thank you.
I'm saying this.